Where should I say that? Oh, am I taking this in passing? We're gonna get going in one second here. We're just...
You just gotta open speak?
No.
Your business opens with me?
It has been. We actually have about 28 kids in there.
Oh, geez.
We're already assessing loss for those who took exams and then went and picked up.
Oh, yeah.
And students from Palisades. Because we serve them.
Yeah.
Okay, clerk, are we ready? Can I start?
We are ready, yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Santa Monica. Welcome to the special meeting today. And I'd like to just remind the audience to turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate so as not to disrupt the meeting. Mayor Protem Terosus, would you like to do the pledge of allegiance and the land acknowledgement?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, do you want?
Yeah. Can we call the roll?
Oh, we're gonna do the land acknowledgement.
Oh, I think we could.
Oh, just kidding.
Uh, Councilmember Wick?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Raskin?
Here.
Councilmember Snell?
Here.
Councilmembers Hitzgaia?
Here.
Mayor Protem Terosus?
Here.
And Mayor Negrete?
Here.
Okay. I'm now gonna read the City of Santa Monica's statement of accountability. The City of Santa Monica is located on the land of the Von Garre. With great respect, the city acknowledges the Gabrielano Tongva as the first people of this ancestral and unceded territory of Curavanga, a village that we know as Santa Monica. We honor their elders, past and present, and the Gabrielano descendants who are part of the Gabrielano Tongva tribes. We recognize that these peoples are still here, and as settlers and Quyam guests, we recognize our responsibility and obligation to care for their land in partnership with them. The City of Santa Monica commits to work in partnership with the Gabrielano Tongva people to uplift their voices and visibility on their ancestral land.
So there's only public input on the one item today since it is a special meeting, and we have, it looks like, eight speakers?
Yes, and city clerk, before we get started, I just wanted to say a special message on behalf of the entire council, and I know everybody will have some words later on. First of all, I see our first responders in the room here, our chief and our police department chief as well. I want to extend to city staff, all those behind the scenes, our first responders, our deepest gratitude. You are heroes. You are putting yourself and your life on the line, and I know many of you also have been impacted and even lost your homes, but yet you continue to go out in the field to keep us safe. City staff, there are many people behind the scenes that are working in our emergency operations center, getting information out and keeping us safe. Thank you so much. We are all in debt to you. We are all in gratitude. I cannot thank you enough. And to all of those who are experiencing loss during this fire, after just going and seeing the devastation in person just an hour ago, my heart is with you. My heart is with everybody in every region and every part of the region and every fire, as we have multiple, not just Palisades and Malibu, to all our neighbors. We are one voice. We are all working together with all leadership, and we will get through this, and our hearts are with you. So I just wanted to say that before we begin. And we will have public input, and bear with me as I am reading handwritten cards. I'm gonna call five names, and if you will just line up in the order I recall them. Shauna Yoshilowa. Margarita Paglia. Scott Marquette. Kay Ambrose. And Kurt Gonca.
Sorry, I know my name is a little weird, Yoshikawa, but that's okay. I live south of the zone. I got a text message yesterday about evacuating. I don't know how to respond. I had to call out for work for the past week because I'm not sure what to do, and I don't understand what's going on with the curfew, so I'm here for that. My son was calling me incessantly yesterday, asking me what to do. How would I go about advising him on that? Because there is so much information, misinformation, I don't know where to go. So if you guys could answer that, that would be great.
Can I answer this? Traditionally, we don't have back and forth conversation, but I did, in fact, just do an update. There are alerts that are coming from the City of Santa Monica. Please heed those. We control those within the city. Yes, it's very frustrating. We share your frustration about the ones that were coming out that were by mistake, and they can be confusing, but the ones that are City of Santa Monica alerts, please heed those. In terms of the curfew currently, it is still in place. We're gonna be discussing that tonight.
What areas to what areas?
We're gonna discuss that tonight, and we'll go over it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a member of the city's public information team or outreach team who might be able to be here to answer similar questions from people who are looking for clarity?
Uh, no, I'm, there is not, but I'm happy to answer. I can speak with you after the council meeting, for sure.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks.
Yes, and just be sure to state your name when you come to the mic. Thank you.
My name is Margarita Palai. I'm the founder of Little Dolphins by the Sea and Seven Arrows Elementary. I want to thank all of you, because 17 years ago, I was here in an emergency. I don't know if any of you were here. And we moved from Palisades here, and we only had four months to do it. And you helped us get a conditional use permit at 1812 Stanford, and it has been a blessing in education in early childhood, and you made that happen. And in a way, Santa Monica became a place of understanding how we can connect with more people than in the Palisades, but you cannot believe it, what you did for us. It was a miracle, and the school is thriving, and we are there, and I'm very thankful to you. I have loved early childhood education. I'm the founder. I started in the garage of my house. We went to Temescal Canyon, that's how we came to Santa Monica, and it has been incredible, so I have a deep respect. I love children, and I love community. Right now, I'm headed with 170 families that more or less 60 or 70% of them lost their houses. When COVID happened, we were the first school that we opened by, again, the help of Santa Monica. We had a place in the beach, and are in Temescal and Three, and were able to be very, very soon, and we were able to be leaders to others, because children, from a neuroscience point of view, must be in school. For me, it's keeping childhood alive. For me, the resilience that all these parents who are traumatized get together will come to be leaders for others, of putting our kids first and to give jobs to do. That's why I'm imploring to you for this, because a day is essential. While people go, they're moving to San Diego, to Florida. I don't want to lose the families just because so many are displaced. So what I'm asking is for you to know how incredible successful we have been in giving normalcy to parents because of what you have done to help, because you also helped me open after COVID. And so I want to thank you to care of education and children.
Thank you, Margarita. Thank you. Thank you so much. Scott?
Hi, yeah, my name is Scott Marlett. I'm the chair of the Board of Seven Arrows. In the last couple days since this has happened, as Margarita said, we've lost, half of the families have lost their homes. We know we need a space for the children. We've been looking all day today and yesterday at spaces in the city. We're committed to being here. Everyone that we've interacted with in the city so far has been super helpful. We know you're gonna talk about this in a little bit, but the main city issue that we'll run into is use permit in sort of non-residential, commercial, industrial space. If there is a way to allow that in a blanket way that expedites that, and our view is that days matter, we have parents who are ready to show up tomorrow morning with brooms and get a space ready, and we've identified spaces. We have the ability of, we have many people here that are supporting our community from a business perspective. We have the ability to get insurance. We have the ability to mobilize. There are spaces that don't even require construction that we could show up to on Monday morning. We can't do that without the appropriate licensing that you guys can provide, and that's what we're here asking for. There will be longer-term issues, including construction build-out, that many schools will face. This isn't just going to impact us. Almost every school in the Palisades will need to relocate here, and anything that you guys can do to allow this. We're invested in the short-term, immediate impact, because many, as Margarita said, many of the families are choosing to leave because they're not in person. Our goal is to be in person on Monday morning. We can do that with your help. We'll also work with you on the sort of intermediate term, because it will be years until we'll be able to return. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Scott. Kay?
Good afternoon, Mayor Negrete, and members of the city council. My name is Cambreeze. I'm a member of the city's rent control board, but I'm here today in my individual capacity as a resident. In the previous days and in the days and weeks ahead, many families have had their homes damaged or completely lost. Moving forward, we will see an influx of residents who have been displaced by the fire seeking rental units in our city. As such, we must ensure that laws against price gouging are strictly enforced. These laws already exist. Penal Code Section 396 and Section 4.32.161 of the municipal code prohibit predatory price spikes following the declaration of an emergency. These laws are referenced in the city's emergency order. In order for these laws to be effective, we need city staff to deploy all available resources to track the rents that were advertised or offered before the emergency declaration went into effect, so that we can have evidence of potential violations. The rent control board tracks and monitors prices of units that are currently leased, but we do not have a way to track advertised rents in vacant rent-controlled units, and we do not track rental rates of non-rent-controlled units. I know that there have been previous discussions about creating a rent registry, and I understand that this process is labor-intensive, but now would be the time to expedite the creation of this registry. As a note, prospective potential tenants should be aware of scammers and should report all instances of scams to the Consumer Protection Unit of the city attorney's office. And as a reminder, Assembly Bill 12 now prohibits property owners from charging more than one month's rent as a security deposit. Thank you to our city's leadership team during this difficult time.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrose. Kurt Gonca? And then I'm just gonna take a brief moment here to call the next names up. Assemblymember Rick Travis-Bur. Robert Oliver. Hank Conning. And Adam Finkel.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Gonca. I'm also a member of the rent control board, appearing in my personal capacity as a resident of Santa Monica. First of all, I want to say, I want to echo your comments, mayor, to our first responders here and across the city and region who have done a remarkable, a remarkable job sacrificing so much for us. And thank you to all of you, because there is a lot of misinformation out there right now, and I think all of you have done a really excellent job of putting out good information that people can rely on, so thank you for doing that. A couple of really quick things I want to hit on here. One, I want to echo the last speaker's comments about the rental registry. It's extremely helpful to have that data to prevent price gouging going forward. The other main thing I want to talk about quickly is in the emergency, the local emergency order, there is a provision to suspend a couple parts of the municipal code relating 6.20 to home sharing and vacation rentals, also residential leasing regulations, 6.22. We definitely want to make sure that we're able to help our neighbors very quickly. We don't want unnecessary red tape and obstacles to doing that, but I would just encourage you to perhaps be very surgical in what we're suspending and not suspend entire provisions, because there are very important things in those provisions around protections for tenants, around safety and other things. Also, not only for protecting tenants while they're in the units, but also whenever the local emergency order is lifted, we'll want to make sure that we're in a position where we can track those short-term rentals and people aren't taken advantage of, and we're able to put in place and enforce existing rules once we're past the emergency. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. As assembly members, there are...
And Madam Mayor, I just wanted to note for the record that Assemblymember Sebire, I'm sorry, Sebire, has time donated by Robert Oliver.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for allowing me to join you today. I want to start out by basically saying that my heart goes out to the many members of our community who've been displaced by these horrible fires, folks that, who may not have lost their homes yet, but we all know people who have and really want to thank the first responders, the police and fire, and your operation of emergency management, which is really doing, you know, round-the-clock work to protect the community, and just want to thank them. I was very grateful to Mayor Negrete, to Mayor Protem Terosus, Councilmember Hall, who met me on Wednesday evening and gave me a tour of your operations center, and it gave me a sense of some of the needs of the community. One of the things that they asked me that night was really to try to have assistance in having a National Guard deployment, something obviously none of us want to see, but obviously it's important that as we ask people to heed, to heed the orders of the community in order to evacuate, people need the peace of mind to make sure that they understand that their homes are not at risk from something other than the fire. And so I want to thank Speaker Rivas, who jumped into action that evening interfacing with the governor's office. Also want to thank Sheriff Luna and also your leadership. And then I also just want to finally thank the staff of the city. It's amazing what the city is doing. You know, Josh and all the members of the staff. I mean, I was, I saw people working around the clock that night, and all of you. I know that three of you were there to meet me that night, but you all have been really out in the community, really understanding the needs of the community. I want to thank every member of this council and the fact that, I appreciate how you're working together. When I talked to the speaker the other day and the governor, one of the things that I told them was, the thing that is, you know, in a time when things are very bleak for a whole bunch of reasons, one of the bright and shining light, rays of light out there is the way that our communities are coming together, that elected officials and our government officials are coming together to do everything that we can to make sure that our community's needs are met. So thank you very much for having me tonight, this evening, and thank you for everything that you're doing, and I just want to thank the city staff and the fire and the police chief and your Office of Emergency Management again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, assembly member, and thank you for your support. Hank Conning?
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. I applaud your speed in considering emergency ordinance to allow uses such as schools to be located in non-residential areas without requiring a CUP on a temporary basis. But what is temporary? We estimate that rebuilding small private schools will take three years, assuming an expedited approval process in the city that the school's located. So maybe that's a good starting number to consider. But in addition to waiving this planning requirement, the council needs to establish expedited approval processes of all other departments and relaxation of some codes. Schools need to find available vacant spaces at reasonable rents to quickly locate into. These could include creative office spaces in the city, often located in converted industrial buildings. Moving a school into such spaces is considered a change of use under the California Building Code, and a change of use generally requires a building to be upgraded to the current building codes. That's a timely and expensive proposition. However, the California Existing Building Code allows a change of use without complying with all the provisions of the building code, subject to the approval of the city's building official. So I urge you to direct the building official to approve the use of that provision. And since schools require extensive insurance, there simply cannot be any reduction in life safety standards, but things like allowing the use of portable toilets, for instance, to supplement the toilets that exist, and they're not requiring energy upgrades or improved acoustic performance in classrooms, those things could be waived on a temporary basis. Some exterior changes may be required for the project.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Adam Finkel, and just a reminder to please state your name when you come to the mic. Adam Finkel?
Adam Finkel, 1225 Hill Street, lifelong Santa Monica resident, and it's very hard to follow Hank in any regard, terms. He basically's, you know, laid out our concerns that the process be expedited in a manner that allows the health and safety issues to be accommodated, not with ignoring them, but to allow schools such as Seven Arrows or any other schools coming into the area to get started, get up and running as quickly as possible, so that way the community can stay intact and can function and can provide the kids what they really need, which is continuity, and then work with the, advise the staff to be supportive of that process and work towards target goals of supporting the rest of the safety issues that the building department has to follow at state-level concerns, but can get to those in a manner that allows us to open and function. And that's the extent of what I have to say, and speed is of the essence, as you all understand and know, and thank you so much for your compassion and your support of the community, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And before I call up the next speaker, just, we have Erica Leslie, and then we also have former council member Bobby Shriver.
Good afternoon. I first want to say thank you to our first responders, police and fire. Thank you for keeping us as safe as possible. It's good to see every, each and every one of you guys. This has been a very treacherous and very scary time for all of us. I'm here today on behalf of some of our disabled neighbors. We should have our commissioners back on tact, because we do have some neighbors that are living by themselves. I couldn't sleep at night because there was a couple of my neighbors that are disabled, a couple in wheelchairs, that if we had to evacuate, they would have been left behind. So in our action plan and our emergency plan moving forward, please think about those, the elderly and the disabled. Also, I want to also echo what my fellow commissioners also said about scams. We've already been scammed. Scams are going on rapidly in our city because our unhoused population is growing, and as it grows, the scams grow as well. Sorry, I mispronounced that a little bit, but it's really been elevated already, so we really need to take advantage of this time and make sure that our Consumer Affairs Department is really on ball in the communication with the community to make sure that every last one of these scammers are caught, and our people are left on the other side without, left without money or hope. Thank you. Take care, everybody, be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Leslie. Former council member Bobby Shriver?
Hi, everybody. I apologize to Barry for growing my ponytail. I did that in Wyoming. I know you're not offended, Barry. I haven't met the rest of you. I was just driving by and heard about this. I know Barry's gonna say something about it, and I wanted to come by and just congratulate the two chiefs who are here. I lived on Adelaide Drive for 35 years, as some of you know, and that's been the front line of the city facing the fire in the Palisades. So on our street, we have had, what one firefighter referred to me, said to me, says, "Looks like North Korea is the militarized zone," because there's so much equipment has been staged there on Adelaide Drive facing the canyon. And every cop that I've seen out there and every firefighter has been flawlessly polite to the residents. We have a bunch of apartment buildings, as you all know, that are facing San Vicente, face the alley on Adelaide. All those residents have been running up and down the street going, "What's happening?" And all your staff, you see the chief, both chiefs here have taken time with them, spoken quietly and nicely to them. These are the street people, right? Street cops, street firemen, not, you know, the fancy people in the community, but they've explained, and they've taken time with folks, and these guys deserve credit for the leadership and the creation of people like that. I think I've heard from other people in town that in other parts of the community, that has not been the case. We don't want to seem negative in this time of sadness, but there has been some misinformation, and there's been some negative reaction by some people to certain enforcement, you know, slash organizational things that have happened around town. I haven't heard it from anybody in Santa Monica. And since the jurisdiction of this body, as you all know, is Santa Monica, there's a tremendous temptation, or at least there was when I was around, to think that your jurisdiction extended to Europe, but in fact, your jurisdiction is Santa Monica. So the stuff that you're responsible for, these cops, these firemen, are doing a great job, and they're doing it on the street in a local way.
Thank you, former council member. Thank you. And we have one last speaker, last but not least, John Smith.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, new council and everybody. I just wanted to say, I was just riding up and down San Vicente, and I saw the National Guard, and everyone's very respectful and polite and fun and offered a mask. It's a sad time, because I think everybody in this room knows people that lost their homes just to the north, and I also, I know someone that every house around their house got burned, but theirs is still there. So, you know, I just, I try to, we should all look for silver linings when we can find them. I appreciate the mayor, you know, doing the curfew earlier rather than later. I think that's the big concern. A lot of people in fire zones, working in news, people stay at their homes, not to save their home, but they're afraid of someone coming in and stealing all their stuff. And I think that was proactive, and I wanted to echo Mr. Shriver's comments, the chief of police and our fire chief. I mean, there's a reason that they're grade A1. And thank you all, and this is a time for unity, and I appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And that concludes public comment.
That is correct. We'll now move on to item 14A, confirm and ratify proclamation of local emergency due to Palisades Fire.
We're going to have a staff report?
Counsel, yes. Mayor, I was going to kick it off. Doug Sloan, City Attorney. Under the authority of the municipal code and California law, the city manager acting as the Director of Emergency Services issued an emergency order or proclamation on January 8th due to the tragic fire in the Palisades adjacent to Santa Monica. The mini-code provides, the order will expire in seven days unless ratified by the council. That is why we are here. The primary question and staff's recommendation is whether to ratify the emergency order, effectively the existence of the emergency. Additionally, there have been some changes approved this morning, so we're asking the council to approve a resolution and revised emergency order two, along with finding, a finding pursuant to Section 15061B3, the common sense exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, that because the measures taken are, among other things, administrative or emergency and temporary in nature, there is no possibility of significant effect on the environment. The findings to support the emergency order in Reso are in the orders in Reso, but are essentially these. A fire broke out in the hills of the Palisades area northwest of Santa Monica on Tuesday, January 7th. Because of extreme high winds, this fire spread rapidly, even threatening Santa Monica. One of the most significant fires in the history of LA County, now over 20,000 acres have burned, with thousands of residences, businesses, and public buildings and infrastructure lost. Many thousands of residents have been displaced, many taking refuge in Santa Monica. The fire also threatened the northern border of Santa Monica, resulting in mandatory evacuation orders and evacuation warnings for additional areas. In the mandatory evacuation areas, the police department has seen attempts at burglary and looting, given the expectation that residents are not there to monitor and protect their property. The key features of the emergency order are as follows. One, schools and childcare facilities displaced by the fire are permitted to relocate temporarily into Santa Monica and properties not necessarily zoned for those uses. Two, preferential parking or permit parking, enforcement is suspended to allow displaced persons to part near homes in which Santa Monica residents have taken them in. Three, restrictions on home sharing or short-term rentals are suspended to allow displaced persons to find a place to reside, as hotels may be fully occupied. Four, prohibitions on price gouging, both retail and for tenants, are emphasized, and the city will be enforcing this. There are, five, there are prohibitions on residential evictions based upon unauthorized presence of pets belonging to people displaced by the fire. Six, there is a curfew imposed in mandatory evacuation zones between sunset and sunrise. This requires law enforcement to warn before arresting for this, though. There are exceptions for certain authorized officials. Seven, building permits are suspended in mandatory and warning evacuation areas to avoid potential causes of additional fires, along with tolling of any time limits to complete permitted work. Eight, purchasing regulations are relaxed to allow for emergency-related purchases and contracting to be timely completed. Nine, mutual aid is authorized. Ten, bed and breakfasts, hotels and motels are authorized to allow tenancies beyond 30 days to allow for displaced persons to stay. That concludes the provisions of the January 8th order. With respect to the revised order entered today, the existing order continues with the following changes. A code reference with respect to price gouging is corrected. Some language in the eviction protection section is clarified. And lastly, language in the section dealing with construction activities is clarified and expanded to include a prohibition on landscaping activities in the mandatory evacuation area. Those are all of the changes. If the orders are ratified, they may continue as modified by the city manager from time to time until terminated by the city manager. The council's options today are, one, make a motion to approve staff's recommendations, which includes ratifying the original order, the resolution, the revised order, and the sequel finding. Or two, make a motion to approve the above with direction to make specified changes. Or three, take no action, but then the order will expire on January 15th. We are available for questions.
Anybody have any questions? Any discussion, comments? Oh, okay, what was your?
There's no request.
Okay. Oh, do you want to just, okay, Mayor Protem Troses? Oh, Council Members, Zeran Skaya?
Sorry, I was looking for the request to speak, and I didn't see the button.
A different mode.
Oh, okay. So I had a couple of questions, but.
Sorry. I'm not going to touch it.
I have a few questions and a few suggestions. I'll start with questions. For item one, the, the allowability of school, schools in non-residential zones without a CUP or a conditional use permit, what's typically the, what does the turnaround time look like and what are, is the definition of temporary in this case?
I would suggest that Jane answer that question?
So I think to answer your immediate question, this, you know, the temporary part is intended to last the length of the emergency order, right? So I think I would think about this in two phases. One is the immediate need, which you heard from some of the testimony today, and then sort of, you know, what happens in the long term. So what the emergency order includes is essentially just a complete elimination of any conditional use permit. So it deals with the zoning aspect of it, right? And that those CUPs, $20,000, they could take months. So that, that process is gone for schools that need to relocate. The building official and I are working actively. We've already met with one school. We're meeting again on Monday morning with another, and we're looking at the permitting process as a whole. And I can tell you that, you know, he's taking, along with the fire marshal, as flexible an approach as we possibly can, given the temporary nature of the occupancy. We understand, you know, obviously the situation we're in here, and we're also under discussions of, you know, what we can do for fees as well, you know, to try and, and reduce those as much as we can, you know, outside of the norm, try to limit the plan check routing process, so, you know, it, it sort of speeds things up. And, you know, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but we're also looking at the opportunity to allow, you know, ways that we can kind of expedite or have concurrent plan check review, you know, while occupancy takes place. But obviously, you know, we don't want to create new hazards, you to replace ones, because obviously we're dealing with a population, you know, very young children, so, you know, there's fire safety ingress, egress, that sort of stuff. We will make sure that, you know, those critical items are addressed, you know, before these places are occupied. But we're definitely here to try and expedite the process as much as possible from a permitting standpoint.
Thank you. On, so, okay, thanks so much. So, section two, the language around the preferential parking rules suspension, I noticed that it specifically says for residents that provide accommodations to persons displaced by the fire, but persons who were displaced by the fires also need suspension of preferential parking rules? Is, I don't know, sorry, that might be veering into comments or suggestions. How, okay, item four on the prohibitions on price gouging, could someone clarify how that's being enforced and how somebody who feels like they may have been a victim of price gouging or might see someone engaging in that behavior could report it?
I'd suggest they report to the city attorney's office.
Okay. Would that be just with the? My gosh, my brain is blanking. The Consumer Affairs?
Yeah, consumer protection.
Consumer protection, okay. And so would they just submit something on the website using the complaint form?
They can do that, or call and leave a message.
Okay.
And we can get back to them.
Okay, thank you. Dang it, there go my notes. Item five, the, the piece to prohibit or to restrict evictions of residential tenants because of more folks and/or pets staying with them who are fleeing the fires. I noticed that it is specific to the Palisades Fire, but there might be folks who are staying with people in Santa Monica who might have been affected by the other wildfires as well. I recognize that the Palisades Fire is the closest, but I think people might have family and friends all over LA. So would that be something that we could consider changing the language of?
That's a policy question for the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly acceptable, if that's what, if the council wants to give that direction completely.
Okay, all right. I think that's it for my questions for now, but I think I might have more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Troses.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to clarify, I'll make a statement and a question. I would like to prioritize folks on our below-market housing waitlist who have been displaced as a result of the Palisades Fire and who qualify for our below-market housing waitlist. I understand we did that during the Woolsey Fire, and we have some draft language for that. How difficult would it be for us to update the current proclamation? And can we do that today to take effect today?
We can do those things very quickly, yes.
Okay, and do we need to come back to another meeting to ratify the changes?
No, once the council ratifies the emergency proclamation, then the manager has ongoing authority to make changes. It can be very fluid without coming back to council.
Okay, great. We will wait for discussion and I'll state.
Basically, you can give direction to make a change.
Yeah, I would like to do that, but I'll wait. Thanks.
Councilmember Swick?
Returning to this question of the length of the order and temporary basis and the meanings thereof, did I hear you say that once this is ratified, essentially it's ineffective until rescinded? There's no, there's no length of time after that?
Yeah, normally up to one year, but I wouldn't imagine this would last that long. But then it's up to the city manager, or possibly the council could take action. But yes, it's the city manager's decision, and it could be components continue and not other components too.
Yeah, my, my question that relates to that then is that there are certain things here, whether it is a school deciding whether or not to relocate to Santa Monica, or a building deciding whether or not to provide short-term rentals or other things to people who are looking for leases, that there, there might be some desire for certainty to know a length of time that they can expect that that will be offered to them before they make a business decision like that. And my question is, while I understand that these will be in effect as long as the emergency is in effect, or as long as it's, until it's changed, is there a way that we could put in the language of this order that, for instance, you know, the decision to, say, operate without a conditional use permit for a school, or the ability for a school to operate without a conditional use permit would be valid for one year, subject to renewal by council, for instance, regardless of whether the order itself is rescinded before that or not?
As Jane walks up, I would say absolutely the council could say that provision is available for up to a year, subject to the emergency order being extended for whatever reason.
Another option is that we could convert it to an IZO at some point?
Yeah, that's what I was about to say, because I just, like, we're really thinking about this in phases. There's this, like, immediate need, right? Where there's tremendous housing need, you know, relocation, and so we're dealing with, like, the critical pieces right now. But if it enacts sort of like a longer-term policy change, we want to be dynamic and fluid and responsive to the needs that we're seeing within the community. So I think we have many tools to be able to, you know, accommodate however the length and, you know, whatever the mechanisms we do to do that, so.
Right, my, my concern though is that there are people who are trying to make decisions about where they're going to locate, and if they have no sense of how long these, these things will last for, and there's no guarantee.
But I think as the manager said, if you wanted to give that direction, you know, through the order to set a time, you know, you could, you certainly have the ability to do that.
Thank you. And then, let me see if there's anything else. I did, I assume that the language is broad, and as far as enforcement goes, it will be broad in terms of providing relief, but I did agree with Council Members Zeran Skaya that it was a little confusing that it said that parking rules would be suspended for residents that provide accommodations to persons displaced by the Palisades Fire. It strikes me that we're mainly looking to provide relief to people who are displaced. It sounds as if it's being provided to the residents who are offering accommodations.
We can look at clarifying the wording.
And then, I also do agree that we live in a region where, while the Palisades Fire is, is the closest to us, there are several very large and traumatic fires that are going to see people displaced across the region. And I do wonder if the language around Palisades Fire, even if, you know, as a practical matter, we're not going to be interrogating you as to where you were displaced from when it comes to the enforcement of some of these, whether it might be better to make some reference instead to the, and I'm struggling for the right words myself here, but, you know, the LA area fires that, you know, have all come this month, in this moment in time. My last question relates to building and planning permits. I don't see reference to them in this order, and I could imagine that this is something that we don't have to address in this moment, but I do know that, and I'm already hearing concerns from people who say that this exact moment will not be an easy one to perhaps put together the final steps or financing or contracting or construction, boots on the ground, shovels on the ground, needed to start projects that might be set to expire in the year 2025. And I know that in other circumstances, we've offered to extend various approvals, permits in this, in instances like this, and I'm just curious if that's contemplated, whether we should contemplate that now, or whether we can do so in the near future to make sure that if there are people with building or planning permits who can't move forward on them as quickly as they had hoped, that we can maybe extend them by a year if they are going to expire in 2025 or something like that.
Yeah, that absolutely, I, I, you're talking generally across the whole city. Yeah, I mean, generally, certainly the council has that policy ability to give us that direction, whether it's through this or some other mechanism.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question about the short-term tenancy regulations. Do we have processes in place to ensure this doesn't balloon into a new crop of long-term illegal Airbnbs?
Well, it would be, we would have to be aware of it and complaint-driven, but yes, this exception is only during the existence of the emergency. So if that's seven days, if that's 30 days, that's it. Beyond that, then those restrictions would kick back in. So if we were made aware of somebody violating the ordinance, when it would return to the normal legal conditions after the emergency order, then we would be enforcing that, yes.
Okay, what is our capacity to have a more active management of that process?
You know, at, at the moment, I'd have to get back to you on that and talk with our code enforcement staff about how they can more proactively manage it, but I'm certain that we can.
I can say within our office, we would reprioritize some other things to focus on that.
Councilmember Raskin?
Thank you. I've received a few inquiries, and this is a question either for David or maybe Chief Alec, about the status of perhaps adding no burn orders or addressing rules regarding to covered fire pits. I know we got one email of somebody who observed somebody burning a covered fire pit in their backyard, and I wonder if somebody could speak to whether or not there's been thought as to a total ban, like a total burn ban, or addressing covered fire pits?
You know, with red flag warning when they're issued, certain limitations, restrictions go into place, that is one of those restrictions. But covered fire pits are something that is, are part of the fire code. So if we expand that in red flag warning or add to that, we could certainly look at addressing that through, you know, whatever process we want to go through. But absolutely.
I mean, do you have any thoughts, I know, putting you on the spot here, but any thoughts on the fly about your comfort level with folks using covered fire pits this time?
Well, we're, we're in a red flag warning, so anytime when the red flag warning is a cause for concern for us. So anytime we can reduce a risk such as that, then I would be in favor of that. And as the fire department, we're always looking to reduce risk, and that would be one mechanism for doing that. So that was something we would look at for sure.
Okay. Yeah, I think we'll come back to that in discussion. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Oh, oh, sorry. I just, on that same note, we, the email that we got, there was a specific note from AQMD saying, like, absolutely not. You don't seem so secure on that. I think we're looking for a message to the community, whether or not it's safe. I mean, we presume common sense would say, please don't burn your fire.
And if that's something, the direction we want to go, absolutely stand behind that, 100% from the fire department.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No worries. Just a few more real quick questions, just with respect to the comments about creating a rent registry. I mean, do we have, is there an easy way to just scrape, or have somebody in staff just scrape all the websites that are offering rent listings right now, just so we can capture that?
Any units that's offering, any rental unit right now?
Yeah, just like, you know, I'm sure IT staff can find a way to, you know, download all the websites.
I honestly do not know if there's an easy way to capture that amount of data.
Do we, I think we're still in questions. We're going to go into discussion in a second. I think we're still in questions. We're going to go into discussion in a second, but it sounds like Mayor Protem Terosus has an answer to that or suggestion.
Okay, yeah, maybe we'll come back to that in discussion then. Yeah, some of the things have already been asked. Just with respect to the suspension of leasing regulations, maybe this is a question for Doug, but hypothetically, if we were to not exclude the regulations with respect to leases to natural persons requiring the primary residence and the enforcement protections for those parts, would that create any issues?
I don't think it would, given the circumstances.
Okay.
Be more specific in what we're exempting.
I'm so, my understanding is that right now the emergency order would suspend everything in chapter 6.22?
Right, in the specified sections, yes. I think it's 20 and 6.20, 2 20 and 22.
Right. So I'm thinking about maybe creating an exception to the suspended section for, I'm thinking specifically of section 6.22.040, which requires there to be leased to natural persons, and section 6.22.050, which requires that the residence piece is a primary residence. And then there are a bunch of enforcement sections related to that in section 6.22.110 through 6.22.140.
We can refine that.
Okay.
And I have a follow-up also, mayor. The question is about reporting on price gouging. The public can report those online at smconsumer.org.
Can you just repeat that?
Smconsumer.org, price gouging complaints.
Okay. Price gouging can be reported at smconsumer.org?
Yes.
More questions? We're still in questions, just want to make sure. Councilmember Swick?
Just following up on that last question, when we talk about a primary residence, I mean, what is the legal definition thereof? Because we're going to have a lot of people who are looking for temporary residence. So I'm just trying to understand, like, how one establishes what a primary residence is. I don't want this change to actually prevent people from seeking refuge here.
I'm not sure of the question.
The suggestion was to remove, remove the removal of a requirement that a rental housing unit be a tenant's primary residence. And the question is, what would that do to someone who is seeking refuge in Santa Monica?
Yeah, so we have we have the definition of primary residence in 6.22. Like I said, well, we understand, I think, the overall concern. I think let us take a look at drafting. I'm not sure that, you know, requiring the primary residence, because it's sort of like base, you know, how would you prove that? It's what's on your driver's license. And if that home is now gone, you know, then that's going to prevent that. So I think in the moment, you know, everything's lifted, just to provide that ultimate flexibility, because, you know, people need housing. I think, again, think about this in phases of the immediate need, and then we can always roll it into, you know, different provisions and amendments to 6.22. If we want to continue, you know, to allow people the flexibility to to have furnished apartments and the like, you know, again, being dynamic and responsive to the need. You know, I could see us potentially like maybe rolling back the suspension of 6.20 because it's a short-term rental piece, right, versus the like three months, six months, nine months sort of thing, where people need some, you know, where to live until they get back on their feet, so.
Thank you for that clarification. That's all.
Any more questions? Okay, so before we move into direction and discussion, would somebody like to move this item?
Should we, would part of it not be?
Well, first, we're going to move the item, then we'll go into discussion and direction as to amending some of this.
Is that, wouldn't we want to move it with?
I asked, and this was the process. Does it matter if we move it?
Make a motion to approve or approve with direction to make changes?
Okay, so does somebody want to put that motion forward? Should I be, I've been taking notes on all the changes and I can announce them, or we can, how would you like to go forward with that? But I do think there is some discussion that wants to be had as well.
Yeah.
I propose that we do the discussion and then make the motion, just so that we know what changes we're proposing first. Is that okay?
I agree.
Okay. It looks like this isn't working, so if you'll just signal to me, I'm going to call in Mayor Protem Terosus first, and then we're in discussion mode now, and this is a good opportunity to give your recommendations to staff.
Sure. So before I get into the recommendations, I just want to say, echoing everyone else, thank you, Chief Helleck, thank you, Chief Batista, thank you, our entire teams, thank you to our city manager, to all of our city staff, to really all of our first responders, to our emergency operations center. You guys are all working so, so incredibly hard. I hope the people of Santa Monica know what amazing first-rate staff that we have that are absolutely keeping us safe and literally sacrificing every hour of sleep to do it. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. I I want to say that I've had some discussions with the city attorney's office around price gouging. I think we're all very concerned about that. And I understand that there might be a regional anti-price gouging effort coming into place. I know that that's going to be part of the ratified order that the county is doing on Tuesday. And I just, I think it's important that we all collaborate regionally with respect to price gouging specifically around tenancies. Doug, I've already forwarded you some some stuff, but we're already seeing that price gouging happening perhaps, and not necessarily like evidenced price gouging, but when when Councilmember Raskin says, let's take a temperature of of the rents in the city right now, I think we're already seeing rents that have been increased. LA Times has already written about it, et cetera. So I don't, the only thing that I can suggest, City Manager White, have we already executed our contract with host compliance from Mr. Mix's section?
Yes.
Okay. Because my understanding is that host compliance does have proprietary software that can scrub, because I don't think we have the in-house capacity, but they do have data that takes like with backend API information from all of the rental sites that can figure out average rents, potentially like direct rents. I'm not sure what's what capabilities they have, but I think it's probably more than the capabilities that we have with our IT department. So I might suggest that we at least touch base with them to see if there's anything we do to help, even if we need to execute a contract amendment. I think we've all talked about this here, about the rent registry, just to our rent control board commissioners' points. I mean, I'll just say it publicly, was planning, I was planning with some other council members on on coming forward at our next regularly scheduled meeting to prioritize the rent registry, because that's something that we had already asked for dating back over a year. If you recall, when we did the tenant protections ordinance, we had already, we had also asked for next steps on how to create a rent registry. So that's absolutely top of mind, and I think that this is expediting that need. In terms of resources for enforcement on the short-term rental policy, I think that it's important, we just reallocate existing resources right now, including additional resources to code enforcement, because we've, I think we've all had people reach out to us about waiving some of the short-term rental requirements, and I could easily see a loophole being taken advantage of there. And if we, again, if we need to increase our contract with host compliance or or other enforcement mechanisms, I would be in favor of that. However, with respect to the actual order that we are approving today, interested to hear more from Councilmembers Wick about waiving some of our building impairment requirements and making it easier for folks to relocate here and folks who are already engaged in projects to continue doing those projects. And to to put a finer point on my earlier question, I personally, and would love to hear other folks' opinions, would like to prioritize on the below-market housing waitlist, people who qualify for the below-market housing waitlist that have been displaced from any of the fires. And I don't think it's very equitable to just say the Palisades fire. I think we need to think about, you know, many of the people who have been displaced by the Eaton Fire, Sunset Fire, et cetera. So would love to have that discussion here and figure out how far do we go when we say fires and how do we define those. But I think we should consider that as well.
Thank you. Who is up next for discussion? Councilmember Swick, did you have any? Councilmember Swick?
Sure, I can just, I guess, respond to that and also suggest a few changes based on the prior discussion and questions. First of all, I would, I would support Councilmember Terosus in adding language that would provide, excuse me, priority for those on the who are displaced by Palisades fire and, I guess, perhaps other fires. The only consideration there is those that perhaps live and work here now that are also waiting a long time for affordable housing, but nonetheless, would support priority for those displaced from rent-controlled or deed-restricted affordable units in the Palisades fire area to get priority on our below-market waitlist, since that is our immediate neighbor. And I think at the very least, I agree that we should, we should do that. When it comes to some of the concerns that I raised and the Councilmember Terosus echoed around allowing schools, and frankly, I think, you know, looking forward, we should also maybe down the line, also think about, you know, businesses and other things as well that are similarly displaced. But for now, when we talk about schools that are perhaps the most urgent, I'm really heartened to hear from Jing and our building official, who I'm not sure if he's here, but I'm really heartened to hear that there's going to be a lot of flexibility going forward. I'm not going to attempt to say what building code specific provision should or shouldn't be waived, but I do think that, you know, it might be worth adding language to the effect that the building official is, you know, is granted broad powers to provide relief from specific building code requirements that are not related to immediate threats to life safety, that follow from a change of use in order to ensure the speedy resumption of learning opportunities for students and schools affected by the Palisades fire. And I did specifically like the idea that if it's specific building code requirements that, you know, or even issues in plan check that are not related to ingress, egress, and other immediate life safety issues, that there could be some possibility of of operating with a permit while while that process is is ongoing. So I just think that's something that, well, we can, we can discuss it, but I hope the council would be in favor of and just, you know, fully supportive of granting as much flexibility as possible in that issue. The last thing I would say, just in relation to the time periods, as mentioned prior, was I would propose that when it comes to this specific item one around the waiver of a conditional use permit, as well as item three around, you know, allowing housing providers to potentially provide short-term and furnished rentals or other things like that, that that we waive that requirement for, I would say, one year at least in the case of, in the case of the schools, and six months at least in the case of temporary rentals, just so that, you know, there's investments required to potentially do this. And if they think it might go away in 15 days, they might not think it's worth doing. So I would propose it be six months at least in in number three. And obviously, these could be subject to increased renewals if if needed by, further renewal by council if necessary.
Councilor, what I would suggest on those items, see, what we're doing here is subject to the existence of the declaration of the emergency. There may be another mechanism, and we'll take that as direction, direction to bring those mechanisms back to get that done, whether it's through, you know, IZO or whatever it may be. We can bring those changes separately, too.
Okay, I just want people to feel assured that, you know, if the emergency ends, these particular provisions won't suddenly end as well.
Right.
So as long as we sort of simultaneously work on making that known and assured, then, and ultimately, you know, some form of temporary emergency or interim zoning ordinances that are needed, then that would be important.
What I think we can do to help is that reflect in the emergency order, the intent to do that.
Okay.
I have a question, if that's okay, unless anybody else wants to speak. In terms of, you know, making sure that we are expediting permits and whatnot for development to make sure that we're providing housing for those that have been impacted by the fire, how do we balance that with like new developers that might take advantage of that, that aren't specifically maybe serving the needs of that community? I know that's a little interesting question. I'm not even sure that it applies in how you would do that, but.
You know, I think we'll we'll take that direction if it is the council's intent to prioritize specifically, you know, all things being equal, that we would move someone to the front of the line who's relocating. We'll take that direction from you. We can certainly add.
I'm sorry, you're talking about, I'm talking about the develop, the developers, like those that weren't in business before and were, you know, they're already in the process right now, helping those developers expedite versus someone maybe coming in new. Is there a balance act with that or no?
I mean, I think that's where we're, if we wanted to prioritize someone who was relocating versus someone who wasn't, right, who was affected by the fire versus wasn't, it would be helpful to have that clarity to explain, you know, why we're prioritizing resources for something else, because we we have who we have, you know.
Sorry, I think you're talking about people who are affected. And I'm specifically talking about the expediting of developers.
Generally.
Developers, yeah.
As far as I can tell, I don't read that in the order. It's just right now about permitting for schools.
For schools, okay.
Yeah, not not, yeah, the the order is not about kind of every every permit in the city.
Okay.
That would be a separate conversation, I think.
That was my only question. Is there more discussion?
Wait, sorry. So it's just schools?
Yeah.
Currently.
I think we should think about expanding it to businesses who can prove that they were doing business in a wildfire area that need to re-home themselves here.
Do you want to expand to other commercial?
Yeah.
Commercial.
Sorry, I jumped the line.
And it's schools and childcare facilities.
Right. And no CUP for the childcare facilities? No CUP for those, yeah, in in non-residential zones, yeah.
So currently, it's schools and childcare facilities. What's contemplated now is the lack of a CUP. What's not written specifically, but has been spoken to, is also flexibility from building code requirements that come along with a change of use. And I do think both, I would love to enshrine that in some way, even though I think it's already happening, and I'm appreciative, just in terms of writing, and I think I had to mention that. And second, I do agree on some fashion that, you know, when it comes to maybe local businesses as well, it would be nice to provide some flexibility in a similar fashion.
Councilmember Snell.
I just want to add to that. I too agree that if we could add the ability for businesses that have also been displaced, that we can support on a temporary basis to, so that they don't have to go through a CPOP process, and we can expedite that. It would be something that I'd be really interested in, without anyone taking advantage of it. I mean, that's the difficult part of it, but I think it's important.
We we've done a lot of work in the post-COVID recovery to remove a lot of those barriers. So I think we're very much well-positioned in terms of relocating, you know, schools are a bit of a unique use, other kinds of businesses, like retail restaurants that what have you, you know, that it is, that that will actually be a much simpler, you know, endeavor if they're looking for space within there. And we're already starting to work to try and, you know, identify available spaces and try and facilitate that process as well.
So, sorry, to be clear then, you're saying that businesses that are already in business, that we're already doing the work to expedite that, we don't need to add specific language around?
Yeah, like with within Santa Monica, you know, just we're not talking about fire displacement, right, just existing permits. Yes, I mean, that in terms of all of the recovery efforts, in terms of removing, you know, any permitting barriers and, you know, working to remove barriers for businesses to open, a lot of that work has happened, you know, over the last few years already. I hear your direction in terms of looking for other ways to do that. You know, that's something that we work on and.
I think the concern is like, for example, if, you know, there's a chain or two mom and pop shops that are, you know, one was affected by the fire and specifically assisting them and making sure that it's expeditiously opened here in Santa Monica and putting them at a priority because they were impacted by the fire.
Yes, yeah, that's something that we can, we can add to the order for clarity.
Okay. Councilmembers Aron Skaya?
I just had a quick question. If we're discussing expediting or waiving or amending CUP rules as part of this for businesses, I just wanted to clarify, are nonprofits included in the definition of businesses?
We we could, we could look at that. Right now, it's very specific to schools and early childcare facilities. But if you want to expand that to nonprofits or other kinds of uses you have in mind, you know, please let us know. And, you know, we can, we can take your direction on that.
Yeah, because I would, I would support the direction to include businesses who are displaced. And I think if the council is amenable to it, I would love to include nonprofits as well, because I think there's going to be nonprofits that are going to be displaced or have been displaced already that will want to provide services to their community.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, as my first comment here, I just want to echo the thanks to the chiefs and our public safety divisions, also to our partners in the 330th Military Police California National Guard for keeping us safe. Thank you for all you're doing. I agree. I agree with Councilmember Zwick, I would definitely like to see lengths of time established, particularly for our home sharing ordinance and any changes to that. I think six months is appropriate, and providing the strongest safeguards against exploitation, I think that's really important for ensuring we are not harming folks seeking long-term residency and ensure our housing stock remains available for renters, but also to protect our hotel industry. And six months would put us at, right at the start of the summer, and I think that would be an appropriate time to relook at that.
Thank you. Okay, at this, anybody else have any other comments? Okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember Raskin, I'm sorry.
Thanks, yeah, I mean, first and foremost, I echo the thanks to the first responders in the room and those who are out in the field, and all the city staff who are working tirelessly, literally around the clock to address these issues. It's really hard to be an advocate for others when you're experiencing adversity yourself, and I know that people in our city community have lost homes, family members have lost homes, and my heart goes out to those who are impacted by this, so deeply thank you all for your work on this. I agree with a lot of the points that have been made, I agree with prioritizing below-market-rate applicants in this, I agree with expanding it to other fires, I agree with the time limits on the short-term rental ordinance. I hope my colleagues will support a, adding to the emergency order a ban on covered outdoor fire pits and other appropriate measures. I do, as Council Mayor Protem Terosis alluded to, we can work with our short-term rental monitoring software to capture the rental data that we need to appropriately enforce these anti-pras gouging laws. I also hope my colleagues will support some surgical exceptions to the suspension of leasing regulations in chapter 6.22. The two that I have in mind specifically is the requirement regarding leases to natural I understand Councilmember Zwick's point about primary residences, but I, I hope that we can still maybe be a little bit more circumspect about spending that for the time being. I'm concerned about folks who will opportunistically take, I don't know why they would, but I'm still concerned that folks would, would try to rent multiple units at a time when there's extraordinary scarcity, and of course, the enforcement provisions that go along with those. I, I do think we should be prioritizing at this point, helping out displaced schools and early childhood education centers above other types of businesses. I, I don't exactly know how to phrase that in terms of, of adding it to the ordinance, but, I mean, obviously, we should be doing what we can to support other types of displaced businesses, but I, I think we should put schools and childhood centers at the front of the line. I think those are all my comments, and again, deepest of thanks to those who are working around the clock. I know that, that this is, this, this is going to be years and years of recovery, and our city stands by with all those who have been affected.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Terosis.
Yeah, I just have a question to clarify, since I'm pretty familiar with the natural persons requirement. Are you saying that we lift the natural persons requirement or keep the natural persons requirement and lift everything else?
As I understand it, the emergency order would lift or essentially suspend everything in chapter 6.22.
Right.
I want to, I want to make sure that, that the natural person requirement is kept in effect.
Okay, I agree with that, and I just want to anecdotally provide some information. I, I literally just got an email from an attorney who said that there is a Santa Monica apartment building that has no rental history, and all of a sudden yesterday, four one-bedroom units popped up on Zillow for $6,500 a month. So, this is happening, it's not, it's not a story like it's happening here. So, I think we have to be super vigilant, and I do agree that we could see corporate actors coming in, like you mentioned, renting 10 units and then re-renting them to people at a higher price. So, we have to protect our rent control stock, we all, I think, I absolutely agree, and I just implore my councilmembers to agree, that we should keep the natural persons requirement.
Thank you. Councilmember Zwick?
Yeah, I'm happy to support, you know, retaining the requirement that rentals be to natural persons. I, I do think, I, I don't think it makes sense in this emergency where people are seeking temporary shelter to make requirements that it be their primary residence, especially if it's not technically their primary residence, if they still have one, if they're, you know, if their driver's license says they live elsewhere and all of their documents, so I, I'm more reticent, I'm opposed to changing or preserving that other requirement in this moment of emergency. When it comes to questions of schools, businesses, et cetera, I mean, like we should be, I think we should be clear here, that the ordinance, sorry, the order, the emergency order really only speaks to conditional use permits for schools. Expediting is great, and I think we're all on the same page that we want to expedite, but it's not really contemplated for anyone in this order. I think the only thing that's being contemplated additionally right now, which I'm trying to make clear, is that when it comes to change-of-use permits, not just conditional use permits, but just simple change-of-use for, for a structure, that, you know, we have a lot of different code requirements, many of which are imposed by the state, some of which are imposed locally, around, you know, energy efficiency, all sorts of things that we all find very laudable, but could take months and a lot of time and money to meet, and I think it's those type of building code requirements that we're talking about waivers from, it's less about, well, of course, this would help expedite getting someone into a space, it's less about saying move faster with approving people, it's about waiving certain building code requirements to get people into spaces quicker.
Anybody else have any other discussion? If not, does somebody want to move this item and then we can give direction and fine-tune it?
So, Council, I assume the motion to approve would include a consensus direction for all of the changes that have been mentioned?
Well...
And we will document all of those.
I mean, I've been keeping notes so we can clarify, my, what I was going to do was move the item and then make sure we fine-tune them, and if the council is amenable, I can read what we have, and we can call on people and see how we can fine-tune it. Do you have a suggestion, Mayor Protem?
No, sure, that's great, so moved.
I'd like to second it.
Okay, so, now I'm going to read what I've captured so far, and I will, please wave, and I will, we can fine-tune it, and I know you've been capturing most of this staff, so. We have clarifying language for parking restrictions to expand outside of only those offering housing, to add or amend language regarding pets, to prioritize the below-market housing waitlist, to clearly put language around price gouging, the decision to operate without a CUP for up to, whatever that is, a year, convert to an IZO, Airbnb language to protect loopholes and illegal extended operations, permitting, expediting for schools, prioritizing schools and childcare centers, CUP modifications, a ban on covered fire pits, development permits, and how we will expedite those, and as Councilmember Zwick just clearly stated, removing some of those specifics that bottleneck it. And then also including businesses and nonprofits, and, yeah, I had something about protecting those around the immediate need, did I miss anything, Council?
Those affected by...
Any fire in LA County?
Oh, right, and extending the language to include not just the Palisades Fire, and in fact, this resolution itself, I don't know if it should be titled differently, just those that have been impacted by the fires in this region. And Councilmember Raskin?
Yeah, just a few, just quick clarifications, and the folks will jump in and correct me. Just with respect to the short-term, or the price gouging, perhaps it could be understood that our direction is to use whatever resources are available to capture data about prices that existed before the emergency, and to the extent that it's supported by other, other councilmembers to expedite the work that is being done on getting our registry finished. And then with respect to the suspension to chapter 6.22, that we, this is at least my, my request, that we do not suspend section 6.22.040, which requires leases to be to natural persons, that we do not suspend section 6.22.050 to the extent that it can be shown that a person has another primary residence at the time of the lease, and that we do not suspend the enforcement provisions in section 6.22.110 through 6.22.140 as they apply to the non-suspended provisions.
Is the maker and the second are amenable to those specific, and you're keeping track of the specifics? Councilmember Zwick?
I just, I don't know, I just, I can't support the idea that we're only going to allow this to be people's primary residences, I mean, my, just by way of example, my parents have a home in the Palisades that is, I think as far as they know, is still standing. They're not going to be back in that home for weeks or months, so what's their primary residence? Are they not allowed to rent in the city of Santa Monica? I just don't understand why we would do that.
City Attorney, do you have any comments on how we would get around that language to...
Well, I think two concepts, one, if they've lost a home, they no longer have that primary residence.
What if it's still standing?
Well, maybe if they don't have access to it. And my understanding also is that you don't want people renting more than one place in Santa Monica, occupying more than one place, and then subleasing it out to somebody else.
Can we just clarify that language right here?
This is, this is why I asked what the definition of a primary residence was, and when I heard it from, from the community development director, it sounded more technical than just, we'll figure out where you live.
Right, but, but I'm saying is that it's affected by the disaster here, because we have people displaced either because their house burned or they just can't get to it right now, because of evacuation.
But we're not going to be literally trying to figure out for every person making a rental in Santa Monica where they came from.
I think what we're asking is to clarify the definition of a primary residence and then develop language around this ordinance so that we are very clear as to whether or not you have completely lost your primary residence or lost access to, because of the fire.
That is the intent.
So, Mayor, I mean, I have the code up now, so I can just read out what the definition of a primary residence is to help facilitate the conversation. So, primary, primary residence means the usual place of return for housing of an owner or tenant as documented by at least two of the following, a motor vehicle registration, a driver's license, or a California state identification card, voter registration, income tax return, proof of payment of resident tuition to a California public institution of higher education, including proof of payment in accordance with an exemption to payment of non-resident tuition under California Assembly Bill 540, California Dream Act, or Utility Bill. An owner or a tenant can only have one primary residence.
Right, so, anyone relocating is not going to have any of those things, and most of them are not going to intend to if they're only going to stay here for three months. It doesn't make sense that they would relocate in that legal sense.
We're not discussing the intent requirement either, there has to be an intent to return, and the intent, I would think of someone whose home is, is burned down, is that they intend to return to it after they built it, so I, I would have to agree with Councilmember Zwick that we should probably not waive, uh, excuse me, not, you're, we're waiving the whole thing, but you want...
Waive the waiver.
Yeah, waive the waiver, yeah.
Yeah, and, Councilmember Terosis, you got your hand up, but I, I, I hear you, and, yeah, I'm, I'm fine walking that back.
Councilmember Nitzkeiha?
Since we just figured that out, that's fine, but I thought of another potential solution of just prohibiting subleasing of units that are leased pursuant to this emergency order, does that make sense? So that way, they don't like rent it and then re-lease, like re-rent it to somebody else?
Do you mean subleasing of the entire unit, or could you still sublease a room?
Oh, that's a good question. I think, well, I think our concern is we don't want folks to take advantage of the situation, rent a bunch of homes, and then re-rent them at a substantially higher cost. I mean, I know that'd be price gouging, you know, and prohibited by other things, but if somebody is, somebody is staying at a, at a home share or in a, in a unit that's, we're exempting in this order, if the concern is this isn't their primary residence, but, okay, I, actually, let's, yeah, let's just not go there, because I think we've already figured it out by...
Well, can I just offer, though, that City Attorney come back with some very specific language as to what has been discussed? Clearly, I think you understand the intent, as does staff, as it pertains to renting rooms and whatnot, we just really want to make sure that people aren't taking advantage of this opportunity, so whatever legal language is needed to clarify that, I think what I hear from the entire council here is we want to be extremely clear and not have sort of ambiguous language that could get people either in trouble or allow people to take advantage.
Not allow it to be overly broad, so I think the intent is that it must, still must be a natural person, and you can only rent one unit in the city of Santa Monica.
Right. Councilmember Hall?
And I think I did see a consensus of nods around the dais for a time limit on the six months for home sharing ordinance and 12 months for the schools and childcare centers.
Correct. Does Council feel comfortable that we've captured most of the direction for staff here and clarification on legal language at the City Attorney's Office? Yes?
Can we go back just, and I apologize for this, to section one? I understand section one right now is currently focused on schools, and I'm just not clear on the businesses and nonprofits component, because the term business is a fairly large category, so I just want to understand what council's intent is with that one section.
The section around businesses, Mayor Protem Terosis, I think we were, I'm going to allow you to clarify, but I think what I understood was anybody who was impacted already in business and impacted by the fire.
Yeah, can we, can we define it as someone who's been doing business in LA County for X number of months, who's been, whose business is, is now shuttered as a result of the fires, or some, or like significantly impacted loss of revenue, whatever it is, that they can't go back to their original place of business and have to relocate to Santa Monica? Is there a way to define that better? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, it's helpful.
I think, yeah, just...
Councilmember Zwick?
Just to add a little to that, yeah, any, any business that was, you know, in LA County that's been impacted or displaced, that is looking to reopen in Santa Monica, that, you know, I mean, most businesses now would require, as Jing mentioned, a conditional use permit, but just that when it comes to getting their permit, you know, if the building requires to be brought up to a number of different code standards, that we would, that we would be as flexible as we are with the schools, as we are with getting those businesses up and running, in a manner that would, you know, potentially waive certain requirements if, if it could enable them to get operating, under the assumption that, I think, under a certain, after a certain period of time, they would meet all of those requirements, but just allow them to get operating as fast as they can.
Councilmember Hall?
Can we, or should we limit that to small businesses or medium-sized businesses to not confuse with giant corporations?
Yes, I agree, oh, sorry, there's a consensus.
To State Department of General Services' definition of small business, it's pretty, it's, it's expansive, yeah.
Are you capturing that, City Attorney? Okay, are we ready to move this item? And we've got a motion by Mayor Protem Terosis, a second by Councilmember Snell, I think we've captured all of the direction for staff, and I think we're ready to do a roll-call vote.
Councilmembers Nitzkeiha?
Yes.
Councilmember Snell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Terosis?
Yes.
Councilmember Raskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Zwick?
Yes.
Mayor Negrete?
Yes.
That motion passes, seven to zero. And...
And I guess we will just adjourn in, in memory of all of those who have lost family, property, et cetera, in, in the fires.
Yes. We also want to remind Santa Monica, I'm just going to take this quick, brief opportunity to remind everyone to please respect the evacuation orders and the personnel that are there. We have the National Guard, we have the police, and we know that it is very hard, we still do have the curfew in effect, which is sunset to sunrise, so please, we've had some reports of people going in with their resident IDs in the mandatory evacuation zones wanting to get in. Unfortunately, you cannot get in during that time, and we ask that you please respect that in order to allow our first responders to do their job, and also, we need to keep that area clear and safe. We will be giving you updates, please follow us on santa monica.gov, all of the council members up here have socia's as well that are giving out those updates, so besides following santa monica.gov and our socia's at the city of Santa Monica on Instagram, also, you can follow the council members here, we are all sharing that information as rapidly as we possibly can. I'm going to talk to you in a minute, ma'am. Thank you, Santa Monica, please stay safe, air quality is changing throughout the day, up and down, wear a mask, try to stay indoors as much as you can, and our hearts are with all of you impacted, thank you and stay safe.